Okay, are we going to start the meeting?
Yes.
All right. All right. Uh, let's see, uh, the minutes, any minutes from a meeting of June 14th, are there any changes or corrections?
No.
No?
No.
I make a motion that the minutes be approved, I got a second?
A second.
Mr. Lim, second, is all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Minutes are good. Next one, it's going to be first order business, Malcolm and Mary Rowe, 60 Highland Ridge. Are they here? Anybody here? That's addition?
Yes.
Huh? Is that you?
Yep.
Okay. As for an application review. You have to do it over here because there's a, actually with a microphone in here. Okay, alright, this is an application review, so I'm not going to make you go into it in great depth, just give me a overview of what you're looking to do here. Are you, first of all, are you representing?
Yes, we're representing clients.
There's no letter in the form here.
Um, okay.
Okay.
Great, well.
Give me a letter of approval and send it to the secretary that you're going to represent.
Yes, us as agent, yes. Yeah, that's when, that's, we have that, I'm, you know, that will be, I know, we'll get it to you, I promise you that.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so we've been asked to design a garage with living space above the new garage to an existing house at forty Highland Ridge Road.
Sixty.
Oh, sorry, sixty Highland Ridge Road, and it's an existing house, it's a large piece of property, you know this better than I do, and so we're here because of the variance required for building, we're exceeding the thousand square foot requirement for a garage, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, and you going to speak, or?
Good.
Identify yourself, tell us who you are, please.
Yeah, James Hart from River Architects.
I'm Carl Hanson from River Architects.
Okay, so both from the architects?
Yes.
Okay. I see what you're trying to do, okay? Now, the only permit you're going to need, then, I mean, the only variance you're going to need is for the garage, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, if you're building, you're building a what's it? Just explain this 556 square foot.
How long and wide?
Walkway, what is that?
It's six feet wide, and the overall length is, it's about 30 feet away, the addition is about 30 feet from the existing house.
How long do you think?
About 30 feet.
About, do you know exact?
Uh, it has a kink in it, I don't have, the, the building corner is 30 feet away, the, the walkway is about.
You need to know exactly.
Thirty-two.
But next meeting, have you? Tonight is just a review, and just so you know, there'll be no meeting in August, okay? The next meeting will be September 13th.
Understood.
Okay? That's what you're, before, it's a vacation in August. Okay, I, I see it's two-story, you're going to have above, you're going to have two-car garage and a bottom, then upstairs you're going to have, what, two bedrooms?
Correct.
And you got a 10 by 38 flex room. What is a flex room?
Uh, it's a home office, essentially.
I tell you, it'd be home office.
Yes.
Is that what a flex room is?
Yeah, that's what it is.
I didn't know either.
I never, I never saw it, so I mean, first time I ever saw a flex room, you know.
Flex room.
Okay, 10 by 38, you could do whatever you want there, you could put a kitchen and everything, right? If you wanted to.
No, no.
No kitchen? Yeah. Right now before.
Just to clarify, is this, um, two-story structure, is this going to be brand-new construction, or is this part of it exist already?
It's brand-new.
Okay.
The connector hallway and the garage and the two-story unit is all brand-new.
All right, so to connect the hallway to the original house is what makes it an addition to the original house?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
The client's requested an enclosed space to connect the two.
As long as it's enclosed, then, okay, because the original house is over 5,000 square feet.
Right, yeah.
Right? Okay. So now you add another couple of thousand square feet.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
For last page.
You don't have to go too much, I'll tell you the truth, we, you know, you got everything here, the only thing I'm going to say you're going to need for September is I'm going to need a, um, letter of, you know, from the, from the owners. And, do anybody else have any questions right now? This is just for, for, you know, to see that it's, we have all the information we need. And we can see your plans and all that, and you gave us a, a thing, and I don't want to make you go through the whole presentation, we have to do it over again, so, you know, I just, just want to get it, just want to, I, I understand it just to what you're trying to do here.
Right, yeah.
Okay? And that's the only variance we need?
Great, yes.
Okay, great.
We will confirm our dimensions and.
All right, to me, all right, for me, the application, it seems complete, I'm going to make a, a motion that the application is complete, do I have a second?
One second.
Mr. Lim, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, you're all set. Go back, September 13th, and then make your presentation and things like that.
September 13th?
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. And a letter, don't forget the letter. September 13th, huh?
Can you secondly that motion?
Uh, Mr. Lim.
Okay.
Uh, next one is Diana Castro, Free Ferris Drive Garrison. Applicant seeking a variance to build a 478-square-foot addition to a 807-square-foot existing non-conforming structure. The applicant is proposing a 35-foot yard setback where 50 feet is required. So you're looking for, basically what you're going to need here is you're going to need a permit, number one, to go to expand up to 25 percent. Okay? Then you're going to need a variance to exceed the 25 percent, okay? Then you're going to need a variance for the, for the, for the setback, which is the front yard setback, it's 50 foot, you're, so you're looking for a 15-foot variance there. Okay. Like I say, this is a public hearing, so just give us a little rundown with you.
Can you grab the microphone, get on it?
Microphone, got to go by the microphone.
Can you hold it or pull it out?
Want to lower it, or?
It's a little bit high. Okay, all right. Oh, just hold it, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, hello. Yes, I'm Jana Song, and this is Diana Castro, she's the owner, and I'm her architect. So, yes, we're doing basically the same thing that the other gentleman just presented, it's an attached one-bay garage, with a little connector to it from the existing building, and we are putting a living space above it. So, basically, we are, uh, this is the existing house here, and the front of this is 39 feet to the center of the road, and we are going to be, I'm sorry, it's the reverse, yeah, this is 39 feet to the center of the road, and we're going to be 35 feet, so we're going to be four feet closer to the road than the existing house, basically, if, it's, it's kind of easier for the public to look at it that way.
Okay.
Rather than, you know, we're encroaching 15-foot into the setback, but.
Right.
Okay, so it's, it's really not changing the nature of the front elevation very much. So, if you look at the elevation here, this is the one-story ranch that she has now, and this is the two-story structure that I'm proposing to put up next to it, and this would be the elevation as she, as you drive in from this driveway here. Now, uh, right here is a photograph of this, a retaining wall here, this elevation here is this elevation of her existing building, and so the new structure will extend out right here. I think what else I wanted to say here, oh, yes, so we're proposing to relocate her driveway, her, she, she has a driveway here, of course, she has no garage now, and, um, it was very awkward for her to park her car here and go all the way around here to the front door, and her kitchen and common living area is at this end of the house. So, we have proposed a new driveway here, which we're applying for a new curb cut at that end of her property. So, there was really no, no other place we could locate this garage at all, because she has extreme ledge rock here and a very steep uphill incline at the back of her property.
You said you were applying for a curb cut?
Yes, we are.
So you don't have it yet?
Well, we have to get the building permit first, before we can apply for the curb cut, and we have to get the zoning variance before we get the building permit, so it's, yeah.
It's kind of a, sort of, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Does any board members have any questions on, on this project? This is a public hearing, does anybody in the audience want to speak to this, or speak for it, or anything else like that? No? All right, there's nobody in, nobody in the audience that would want to speak to it, so I guess your neighbors are not too far against it, because they all received letters. Somebody was against it, they'd be here. Okay, there are no questions on the board? Okay. Make, make a motion to close the public hearing? I got a second? All seconds of motion to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Now, what we want to do, I want to go over what's called a five factors, which you, you gave us, we use this to help us determine.
Okay.
The legitimacy of your, of your application. Uh, first one is, what possible detriment would the variance have on nearby properties? And your answer is no detriment to property, distance to neighbor's properties, 100-foot or more, yes, it will be visible, but does not block a view. That's true, because I went down, I looked at it, and I agree with that.
Okay.
What impacts would the variance have on the character neighborhood? Addition would be closer to the road. Yeah, that's a little true, but all the houses pretty much see the same in the area, wouldn't be, it wouldn't, I don't think it would make, make a difference there. Number two, if you didn't get the variance, how else could you build, you want to accomplish your goal? Alternate location is not possible due to location of existing septic field, you explained that to us. What is the code requirement you seek to vary? You've got yard side setbacks, dimensional setback of 50 feet, you want 15 feet, but of course, as you know, these, there's these other two items in there, that you're going to have to.
Good.
If you're granted, you would have to get. Uh, let's see, what impact and effect would the variance have on the current physical and environmental condition in the area? Increases lot coverage, but does not violate maximal amount. New location of the driveway will require paving and unpaved area. No wetlands or water course. Well, no septic at required distance, no emissions and no increase in traffic, and not a scenic area. I agree with all that, you're correct with that. And the variance requested is a result of its self-created hardship, and you're saying no, the house was constructed prior to the setbacks established. I agree with that, because this is pre-existing non-conforming. Anybody have any questions on this, or anybody? Okay. At this time, I make a motion, at this time, I'll take a vote. Mr. Lim?
I'll vote in favor.
Mr. Lim's in favor. Franzen?
I vote to approve.
Vote to approve.
I vote to approve also.
And I vote to approve.
Very good.
You're all set, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Now, what you could do is you call a building inspector, tell them it was approved, and he'll tell you how to proceed from there.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Okay, thank you. All right, let's see, what's next here? Next is Two Hudson River Lane, Dana Raymond. Applicant is seeking a 10-foot variance, 30 foot is required, and you, the sideline, and you want to go 20 feet to the side signs, you're looking for a 10-foot variance. Okay, and I know you already built the, you already did the foundation, not the foundation, I'm sorry, you already did the footings for the building, yeah. Foundations for the house, but I mean, you did the footings for this, okay. So, when you do this, I have a question, if, if it's approved, you're going to have to remove the footings, right? That are there?
Yes.
Correct, okay, because we're going to put that in there, that, that has to be removed.
Yes.
Okay. Now, also, are you going to connect the wall, that makes it legal, or whatever like that, is that going to be connected, that going to be extended too? I'll ask your attorney.
Chairman, Kevin Raymond, the applicant, Jeff Jordan is the architect, Michael LaCory from Hogan and Rossi, the attorney for the applicant.
Can you say my phone number?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make sure we had our names on the record, Michael LaCory, Hogan and Rossi, again, Kevin Raymond, property owner, and Jeff Jordan, who is Mr. and Mrs. Raymond's architect.
Okay. And of course, I'm going to have it put in the, you have to be approved by the conservation or your board, you're aware of that.
That's right, yep.
Okay, that'll be in, that will be the resolution, that's, that's the condition.
That's right.
Okay. And the other condition is going to be that that has to be removed, the footings?
Uh, right.
The present footings that are there now?
That's right. Yeah, so the, the footing to the south will, I think the footing to the north could stay in, is that correct?
The entire footing would be removed.
Okay, then it would be.
It's going to be removed, and you're going to fill it in, make it, and then put the, put the other one, where you hope there's no rock.
Yep, they'll have to basically reform it for, and the south.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, then you, you.
You have to come up.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. No, I know the footings are already there, that's what I'm saying, I don't want them to be left there.
Yeah, they would need to be removed in order to form and construct the new ones, so, yep.
Okay, all right. Like I said, I'm going to make that out of, part of the resolution, all right?
Chairman, the conservation board meeting is tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
I'm sorry?
Tomorrow night, we appear before the conservation board.
Conservation board?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Just so I'm clear in terms of the exact numbers, the closest part of the proposed structure will be how far from the side yard lot line?
20 feet.
20 feet, okay. And it's a 30-foot requirement in the zoning district?
Right, if, if, according to the regulations for non-conforming parcels, and recall that after the merger of the three parcels, two, four, and six, which results in Two Hudson River Lane, as you guys have currently seen it, um, we, we're at 1.5 acres, and the zoning code calls for non-conforming lots that are greater than an acre shall have a 30-foot side yard, non-conforming lots less than an acre shall have a 20-foot side yard. So we are, we have the 30-foot requirement, we're asking to go to 20.
Right, there's some properties down there that have a 20-foot, because they don't have, they don't have that.
They don't have the.
They don't have the space, right, right, okay.
And just, again, to clarify for the record, the proposed structure will have what, what uses?
Mr. Rod, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the whole question.
The proposed structure, that's an issue in this application, is going to have what uses?
So, this is a single-family home, and there are two components to the single-family home. The component to the north, which is on, on the, the north side of the decking, is bedrooms, living room, traditional space, the attached structure has two floors, and essentially both are studio-type uses, they're designed specifically not to meet the bedroom count, so there's, yeah, essentially, so the, the widths are, you know, wide enough so that they don't count as bedrooms and designed specifically for that way.
Would be a kitchen area, or anything else like that, or?
No, there would.
No kitchen.
No kitchen.
No bathroom, though, right?
There's a bathroom, correct.
All right, because we don't want to use, use for residential use, you know, living space, it's not.
They would not be living space, they're studio space, yep.
Okay. You said you have to move by 10 feet to achieve additional functional basement. Are you sure you're going to get a functional basement by moving to 10 feet? Would that put all that rock down there?
Perhaps we should bring Will the contractor in.
Yes.
Okay, we got the whole crew here.
We asked our contractor to come to.
Hold it by the microphone, you got to, tell us who you are, and tell us what you're planning on doing.
The whole band is here now.
My name is Will Bear, I'm the project manager on this for RTH. When we did our excavation on site, we discovered bedrock sloping towards the river, it eliminated most of the proposed basement in the main house, and judging by the slope of the bedrock, what we excavated, excavated so far for the annex and the main house, we can gauge how it lays, we see it dissipating and moving back towards the east as you get further south.
So.
So, yeah, so we see the potential for making actually a lot more basement space underneath there.
I understand, the, the end of your building line, that's the point, that has to be 20 feet from the, you know, from, from the property line, you know that, you understand what I'm saying, you only get 20 feet.
So should we change?
You only get 20 feet, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
I don't want you to start digging, you know, rocking all of a sudden, well, if I don't know the two or three feet, I'll be okay.
Oh, no, no.
I'm trying to say, right, you know? Well, we've had that problem down there, okay?
No, no, no. We, we pay very close attention to these, we take these limits very seriously.
All right. And if you go down and there's rock, what are you going to do?
That's it, I mean, what?
That's it, that's what it, that's it, and that's the end of it.
Yeah, I mean, there's, unless we can gain more property somewhere, I don't see.
And you're going to remove all the footings that are there now, it's all going to be dug up?
Yes.
Okay, any questions, anybody? Okay. Anybody from the audience want to speak to this? Huh? Got something to say? No, because, they say it's, it's a gamble that we might make it, you know, a basement, I don't.
I can see we are very confident, we can see exactly how the rock is lying.
Your words here is, it's a gamble.
My words?
Well, the words in the application.
Oh, I didn't write the application, I'm just the guy who dug the hole.
All right, I'm going to go over the five factors here to, on this application, I mean, on this public hearing. What possible, what possible detriment would the variance have on nearby properties? We see benefits and no detriments. We will be reducing traffic on the lane. How are you going to do that? How are you going to reduce the traffic by building another house?
We were looking at the overall character of the neighborhood, and, um, the merger of the three parcels, the removal of, of two houses, and the construction of only one house.
Oh, okay.
The overall impact is reductions overall.
That's what you're going to do. I just tried to figure out how you're going to do that, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
We're going to block it, actually.
Right, that's right. All right, let's see, the frequency and density of the lane, oh, we spoke about, before we go further, we spoke about shrubs or something like that?
Yes, in the plans, we've screened the mechanicals to the south.
Right.
If Jeff can actually talk to that.
Yeah, I'm, before I go any further with that, I forgot about that. Some kind of a screening.
Yeah, the idea, as you can see here.
It comes along. I think it comes along.
Yeah, as you can see in the, the renderings that we've provided, this one shows the south side of the building with the units.
Right.
Plantings, right? The idea is to plant that out and conceal the units completely. Also, I think it was pointed out in the application, the units are modern, high-end, high-efficiency units, their decibel levels are very low relative to what would have been there previously.
Right.
So, overall, the sound level should be quite low, invisibly, or the visuals won't have any impact on the neighbor.
Right, right, because the generator's not, doesn't have, the generator's noisy.
When it's running, it's noisy, yeah.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Yep, yep.
All right, how high are these going to be, those shrubs? What are you planning on, how, give me, give me an idea, what are we talking about?
I'm not the landscape architect, there's a landscape architect, and he just started on the project, the idea is that.
I want, but originally going to plant it high enough to cover the.
Yeah, and he, he's aware of that, so he'll, he'll come up with a planting size and species and all that, that, right from the start, blocks it, right?
Blocks.
So, it won't take 10 years to get to a point where it's blocking it, he'll put in plants that are big enough immediately to attain it, even if they have to do an offset or something.
That's what we're looking for.
Chairman, we would accept that as a condition.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're looking for, is at the beginning, so you put it, so blocks that.
Yep.
Okay, all right. What impacts of variance would it have on the character neighborhood? Do we know negative impact on the variance for the character neighborhood? We feel it should be a positive impact. As we merged the lots, eliminated the potential for three single-family homes, therefore we decreased the potential of three septic systems. Have other, does it, neighborhood contains similar structures, similar heights, neighborhood has several structures tall than ours, and this is the only one house tall as a lane, a recent renovation that remained as a one-story structure, most of the houses will be 11, 11 feet tall with a small two-story element at 24-foot tall. Is your property similar with different properties in the area? Similar that we are located adjacent to Hudson River, and our property is non-conforming. All right, let's see. If you didn't get the variance, how else could you accomplish your goal? The only option I see would be to move the structure closest to the river and reorient it. Although it is within our right to more, move west as per zoning, we selected otherwise so as not to block our neighbors' views. Well, being that we're right on, right on the Hudson River, I can understand that. What impact effect would the, would the variance have on the current physical and environmental conditions in the area? It says, our neighbors are eight HRL, will gain a 10-foot separation between us, and then a smaller structure, 899 versus 1600 if the variance is granted. We believe all the other neighbors will, will now be able to view a larger portion of the river, because most of the houses are only 11, 11, 11 feet, 11 inches high. Environmental conditions, we see no negative environmental impact. Is there blasting, grating or blasting involved? No, okay. If the variance requested a result of self-created hardship. Well, you say it could be argued that there are many variances for self-created hardship. When designing a home, we wanted to stay as far away as possible for two reasons, the switching station, the Manito switching station, his passengers using the stop, newly installed very loud crossing guards. Like I explained to you, you have to call the MTA on that one, the noise on the, on, we have.
It's a losing dial.
Yeah, that's a, well, God bless you, you know, that's, that's a, that's a lifelong.
My firm represents the town of Patterson, and Patterson Town Hall is immediately on the train station. We've tried to get them to reduce the sound of the horn as they go by.
Right.
And, to date, we've had no response, and I, I think a letter from, you know, the supervisor of that town asking for some help that goes ignored constantly, I think ours would go ignored here, too.
All right. Okay, uh, at this point, I make a motion to the public hearing be closed, I got a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Lim, seconded it. You take a vote on this application? Uh, Mr. Lim? I mean, on this variance?
I'll vote in favor.
In favor? Manit?
I vote in favor.
Ball?
I vote in favor, okay, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
You know what to do, you call a building inspector and all that, you're, okay. Hopefully, you know, hopefully you end up with a bigger basement.
You don't, so.[1557.33]
I don't, I just hope you don't dig into the Hudson River. I mean, you know, you're right there, so if you, you end up with water, you're on your own. Okay. Let's see, next one is Shanna Grodd and Jesse Houston, Wilbrook, 28 and 30 Hudson River Lane, Garrison, New York.
Another Hudson River.
Hudson River. This is a public hearing, and I guess you want to explain it to us? I know, I know we had a couple of different changes, or different things, or like that. Let me go over what you're going to need first to do this project. First, you're going to need, you're going to need a special permit, right? Right, the floor, you know, for, because of the floor area, and to go up to the 25%. Then you're going to need an area variance. There will be a side yard setback on the north side of the new house of six feet. The existing side yard setback on the north side is five feet, six inches. So the side yard setback on the north will be six inches greater than it was previously, but still shorter than 20-foot setback requirement. Area variance, you're going to need, with the proposed new house, the impervious surface coverage will be reduced from 38% to 37.4%, a decrease of 1%. The maximum impervious surface coverage in our zoning is 10%. Area variance number three is, with the proposed new house, a front setback of 19 feet, six inches proposed. The existing front yard setback for the two lots are 23 feet, one inch, and 23, 21 foot, one inch. So the applicants are decreasing the front yard setback by up to about three and a half feet. The minimum front yard setback for the our zoning is 60 feet. Okay. So tell us what you're going to do here.
Okay. So first of all, this is Jesse and Jenna, our clients.
Hello.
I saw you on Zoom.
Yeah.
You had babies, though, at the time, I wave, we cause a little trouble.
He's with his grandma.
Right, okay.
And this is Dee from my office.
Okay.
So, so the plan is to, we're taking two lots that are non-conforming, combining them into one that is still non-conforming, but we're reducing the non-conformance by extinguishing the property line dividing the two. So we're taking out two setbacks that would, were, are unworkable. And we're building a single-family home that will bridge over the existing boat launch there. We've got that reflected in the plans. And so it's, the idea is to, also to build the structure so that it's high enough that it's not going to be conceivably flooded. We've measured out the height of where the water raised to during Sandy, and we're building it at least a foot higher than Sandy, possibly a little bit more, but not in excess of height requirements, of course. So the, sorry, I'm stuck here.
Do you have a three on how?
Are you raising it?
We are raising it about four feet.
Four feet.
And we're, there's no basement, we're going to build basically a solid slab on the, a solid slab on the, at grade that will be insulated and picking us up a little bit. So, and it's not going to be just sticking four feet, we're going to match the grade of the adjacent house number 26 that, that is built up higher than our, than our clients here, and so that we'll have the same grade as they will, raising that added four feet of height, two feet in soil, two feet in foundation, so it's not going to be sticking up ugly out of the ground, right? So, so this is an updated set of drawings from what we had previously submitted that shows that relationship as planned.
I know we spoke about a, an opening on the first floor for like a boat area or something like that, is that what the...
Correct, yeah.
Right, yeah, okay. But just, the two, they're connected by a second floor, right?
Yes, yeah, so there's, here's the existing boat ramp that is essentially where the current property line is, where the two meet.
Right.
There's a natural shoreline to the beach, and so we're going to maintain that pathway and bridging across the living room on the second floor.
Okay. And are you going to put solar panels on a, or garden on the roof or something like that?
Garden on the garage roof, a one-story garage. So just, here's that pathway that we're keeping open. The garage will be centered to the, well, the access to the property, the garage is centered on the property, and then two kind of separate entrances that meet above. And then looking at, I'm sorry, the roof plan, am I missing that? Oh, it's over here, sorry. So, yeah, can you point out the...
It'll be quite a project, huh?
Yeah. So green roof, a garden essentially above the one-story garage, and then on the second story of the upstairs, we're going to have a green roof there as well as solar panels in the north portion, so we get better exposure there. We may be also doing a green roof there, we haven't quite figured that out yet. We're also doing rainwater capture, and I think another aspect that's important to know about the project is that we will not be having any fossil fuels on site, so no generator, there will be no noise generated by that. We eliminate the risk of having petrochemicals released into the Hudson because we won't have any, basically because the energy efficiency plus the all-electric aspects of the project. So I think that's a good plus.
All right. Would the owners like to speak? Would I say anything, or, no? You okay?
I like the job he's doing.
I'm sorry?
I say I like the job he's doing.
Okay.
I know, we really like the town, we want to stay here for a longer term, we just had our son, we look forward to him growing up in the area, and we just, we love where we are right now and look forward to raising a family there.
Good. I got a letter here from your neighbor, I guess Christine O'Neill and Jack Ward. It says, "To whom may concern? We live at 26 Hudson River Lane and have been neighbors with Gene Grodd and Jesse Wilderick for two years. They have been lovely neighbors during this time, which gives us full confidence they will continue to be so in the future. They shared their plans for the new home with us, and we fully support their endeavor and think it is a, will be a great addition to the lane. Thank you, Christine O'Neill and Jack Ward." Well, that's good. It's always good to get a letter from the neighbor.
I should note that that's the, that's the unit, 26 is just to the north where the six-foot existing variance is.
Right, okay, thank you. All right. Oh, I got another one, hold on. Somebody just handed something. From, this is from Kevin Raymond. Yeah, Dana and I have lived in Hudson River Lane since 2012. We're the former, they just, we'll give you, he's over there, he just got you. They moved. Former owners of 28 and 30, incredibly happy to have a neighbor such as Jen and Jesse. We hope they can build a home suited to the needs in order to stay in the neighborhood. We support their variance request. The old neighbors are for you, that's a first for down here, I can tell you that.
Yes. It's a small community.
Okay. We've had some, we had some issues down here in the past, okay? But, so it's good to hear that your neighbors will for you now. Anybody aboard have any questions? I'm going to go over the five variances with this, the factors, I mean. The reason for this is to, we, helps us decide whether we're going to issue this or not. Now, you know, there's a lot more work, you're going to have to go to the planning board and everything else like that, conservation board, you know all that.
Yep.
Correct, okay. What possible detriment would the variance have on nearby properties? Proposed new site plan and dwelling unit is visible from nearby properties, all exterior lights will be dark sky compliant. What is dark sky compliant?
So you don't see glare across the river?
Yeah.
Is it pointing down, is that how?
Yeah, essentially.
Okay.
If you notice the, the lights at the dock in Main Street, we did those lights there, they're all dark sky compliant, so you don't, it's not like light hitting you in the eyes.
Okay, great. What impacts would the variance have in a character neighborhood? Proposed new site plan, new site plan is in line with the character neighborhood. I have to agree with that because everybody seems to be building, building new places down here, so if you didn't get the variance, what else could you build when you went to accomplish your goal? Due to site limitations, we were not able to construct a four-bedroom dwelling unit within the required setbacks. What is the code requirement to seek to vary? Well, we went through that, there's a couple of different ones you have to, you're going to have to meet. What impact or effect would the variance have on the current physical and environmental conditions in the area? We propose to add a new porous driveway. R porous driveway by what? What do you mean porous driveway? You're going to...
So it's basically like a matrix of, like a plastic mesh that allows grass to grow through or gravel to be set in it without compacting it fully, so water's able to absorb through it.
Water can go down.
Yeah.
Okay. And restore portion of existing driveway to lawn or garden. There will be minimal, if any, grating on site. The site is located within the 10, 100-foot wetland buffer zone of wetlands and water course. Site is adjacent to the Hudson River. Propose a new septic system located 100 feet from the existing well. Proposed site plan will be fossil fuel-free, new dwelling unit utilized as solar PV collection and battery storage. Now, what if the variance is self-created hardship? Well, self-created hardship down here is because the properties are so small, you know, and there's been a lot of variances and, you know, so on and so forth, in, in years down there, so I don't know if it's self-created or it was created over the years of the change of times, so. Anybody have any questions?
I have a question, this is my curiosity. So if, if you're heating and having electric through solar panels and a battery, do you anticipate any problems, you know, if it's not sunny? Or do you have an alternative system?
Yeah, that's a great question. Thanks. So the idea with the, the approach is that we're, because of the energy efficiency, we're using like 70 to 90% less energy to heat or cool the house and to light it, and so we will still be grid tied, but the loads will be very, very small. And actually, the batteries can be sized enough to at least keep the critical functions going, keep the refrigerator running, a few lights and the fresh air ventilator and the heat pump. But it really, the great thing about it is even if the power goes out for weeks, it never gets cold enough in these houses because it's, they're so energy efficient.
So you're, you're connected to the grid that would support the heat pump as well if it needed?
Exactly, yeah, we'll be back feeding to the grid, drawing from it as needed, but mostly it'll, the batteries will kind of, you know, maintain most of the energy needed.
Sounds like a good plan.
Yeah, it's pretty great.
Has anybody in the audience like to speak on this? Okay, we went over everything. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. Add a second? Paul seconds it. I'm going to take a, we'll call a vote, Mr. Lim?
I'll vote in favor.
Mr. Lim's in favor? Mr. Franzen?
I vote to approve.
In favor? Paul?
I vote to approve as well.
Approve, and I vote to approve, okay.
Thank you very much.
You're all set, on to the next, on to the next step.
This is great, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night. Any... Say the least. Any, any old business, new business, anybody? No? Okay. I did a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Lim, second, and all in favor? Okay, that's, then we're good until September 12.
September...
Oh, no, September 13th.
13th, right?
Yeah.
Second Monday.
Second Monday, right, 13th. Right.